I'll wait. The main one, your.
Five years. Yes.
Pass the amount of work you perceive. The temporary and then you as a board decide this way. When I knew that I was.
Why?
Yeah. And then we.
You.
Reading.
Move.
I'm the FOIA coordinator website access person. No, would you use?
No. Um. The other thing I'm questioning, did we say FOIA coordinator, website access person, or were we also talking in general staffing?
That's why we're. At the last meeting, it was, we were talking about a FOIA coordinator, coordinator, talking about an access person, and I had brought up possibly an office manager. So I had some work session on either of those.
No, but I'm just saying, okay. Just because it didn't say staffing in general, that's the only reason I was questioning that.
We're trying to figure out if we want to add staff or just make that someone that's a trustee.
Okay. Well, the FOIA coordinator, it seems. And I can't speak to David, and I mean, he's not here, but it seems that. From a temporary viewpoint, at least. That's working. Yes, no? Right, but my point is, I think. Right, but I, am I correct in assuming that? Since he's doing it right now, that process is working. I mean, are we, are we here to discuss having a? FOIA coordinate, this is where it's difficult, not having. David here.
Well.
I don't either.
Full work session, then we're not. Only purpose of. Somebody taking.
Yeah, but we knew upfront Ed wasn't going to be here. So we already knew we were one short.
Everybody. Things scheduled on the table with others. I can tell you Monday through Thursday, so sometimes Sunday afternoon. And I work for four to five days a week. Yeah. That's a lot of running.
So, and help me with this too, because I mean, I had conversations with Shelley. Back before we knew who was applying for the clerk, because. I was actually approached and was semi considering it, but wanting to really understand what was going on. And. So there was a list that Shelley had, you know, explaining to me that it's not just elections or not just, you know, whatever. So I understood that. And then when I was asking her about the amount of time, she kind of intimated somewhat what you're saying right now, then added that. When it's, when it's not an election year, it's totally different ballgame. You know, because this, I mean, this year we're dealing with. Election law changes. We're dealing with. Major. Federal election. We're dealing, even though you were deputy clerk, I mean, we got to be fair and say, we have two people that are assuming new duties. And so. I guess where I'm coming from is. How do we make a decision when we're reacting to what I'm going to consider? A perfect storm? You know, new people, election, whatever. How do we evaluate? What we're dealing with right now versus what the situation's going to be? In 2025? I mean, is there a way to understand? Like with the hours you're working? What, where the focus is or what the time is or? See what I'm saying? I mean, I.
Yeah. We've always needed somebody. This office has always needed extra. And. I think that. We, a new person that is. Going to be changed. I mean, we would love to have everybody in here all four years, but if you have one consistent person that is hired and not electeded, they can help each person. With that role, with those things, with helping. Then you have that person with the public always. That's the same person posting on the website. That's the same person making sure all the information is out. Versus if you have rotation. Anything else that you've done, I mean, there is so much. All of that. That if you have one person that's been with all of that, it'll all. The number of. Probably times again for the last seven years. The public. Have someone here who's been in kinds of, was that information? That would be great.
Okay, so you're really focusing just on a manager right now, from everything you're saying. How long ago was that? I don't. But how long ago? Because I don't remember that from. Okay. That almost sounds administrative, not management. Okay, so it's not. That's good.
Who acted calling or somebody? And I was. They don't make all these darn rules. Right now.
Right, right. So. So it sounds like though, what I'm hearing, when I first heard office manager, I. Interpreted that differently. It's from what, from your comments, it's sounding like that person would be more administrative. Than. Quote, management. Is that what you see also? Well. No, I'm asking questions because I just keep hearing that term and I'm, so I'm trying to say. So, so my point is, my interpretation of office manager was different than what you guys are talking about. And I think part of it is, I was hearing man, a township manager, I think was the term I heard at one point. And so I took that truly as management, not as administrative.
Yeah, and that's. I didn't. Know in what we. What I.
So we're basically talking about, we need more support staff or administrative staff. And then what? Okay, so. And then that person. Potentially could be the FOIA coordinator. If the supervisor wasn't doing it. That person could be the website person. What else? I mean, is this a full-time position? Is this a part-time position? Well. But you've got a lot of experience that, and that, so I, I need to ask questions because I'm trying to understand the scope. Of what needs to be done, and that's, that's what I'm getting at, rather than a, well, this person could do this and whatever. It's like. Tell me what the person's going to do. And understand that. Like a full job description to me would be the first, I mean, I think that's what we need to discuss is if there's. A position in a job description that makes sense and how that. Interacts and interplays with the clerk's office and the treasurer's office and or the supervisor.
That's why it was listed on there because I had no idea what.
So how many hours are you working right now? Was it Monday through Thursday or? Full time? But full time or the ninety-two or?
The office hours here, nine or two she's here, but she comes in to do extra work. And flexibility. And like, that's why we're not open on Thursdays, so she can get caught up.
Yeah. But to me, it's not. Yeah, but I, I mean, I get. I can tell you right now, for me, I would not approve hiring anybody right now till somebody gives me information so I understand. You know. What is it we're asking for specifically? What skillset's going to be needed? And try to understand where the. I mean, to hear that both of you are working a lot of hours does, I mean. I'm empathetic to that, but it's like, tell me why, tell me. Tell me what is. Causing it. So, you know, I spend. Seventy percent of my time on the election, I spend, you know, or. Because one, I don't. Part of it is trying to understand. The second part is if. I, and I'm just going to speak for me, if I'm being asked to hire somebody, I want to understand. What the person is going to be asked to do, the scope of it is, and scope, I mean, not just. Work, but are we talking forty hours? Are we talking twenty hours? And then what skillset we're going to need, because depending on where the help's needed. I don't know what skillset we're, we're looking for. And then the, and then the only other part about it that I have, and it's kind of separate. I don't know how long it's going to take us to get there. I mean, I don't know if we're going to have another meeting where everybody's here and we can make a decision, or if this is going to be a drawn out process. But what can we do about the website in the meantime? I've been asking for like, two months for access. To try to help and like, it's not happening. I, I agree with that. I agree with that, but. Well, and I've, and I've asked for access. For at least two months. I don't have access. I, I, I don't have access and I don't have any. Training that even if I had access to get in, and so. And I'm. I'm not saying I'm the long-term answer. Maybe I am, maybe I'm not, but. There are things that could be done. It was like I was saying to you at night, I got my computer. I'm always doing something on my computer. It would be very.
Need to be updating it. At least. If nothing else, putting a Band-Aid on the situation until we get the situation resolved because. Even little things could start getting correct. Know what I mean? Four. Things coming in, like our website is more interesting than it used to be. It used to be. You put it on there. Now we're in complete control of that website, which gives us great access for the public. However, it does give more work than they're using.
Interesting.
And not just that, but it. Now we have committees that are changing over something that I didn't know. They're wanting stuff done. They're wanting all of it. At some point, there has to be an access person, and then you add on, just let this be. I'm here, wanted to buy a plot. I recorded it. Record that where that was for. In the. Who's going to do that?
I don't know, but I don't know how that answers my question about web access.
And you're talking about not having, or that work's always been there. Changing that's getting that we need to supplement in.
No, what I was talking about right then is. Not knowing how long, there's, one, it's a work session, so we couldn't make a decision if we wanted to today anyway. Two. We don't have input from two board members. So. I, I've mentioned my comments about that, but the specific question I just had asked was. How do we deal? I'm concerned about not know. The unknown of when we would hire somebody, have somebody in place if that was the decision, because again, I have no idea what the decision would be without two other people here to have a discussion. I'll repeat what I've said. I would like to step in and at least as a Band-Aid, start helping with the website. So that we can. At least get. The areas of it that are easily correctable. That even I could do. Done. Because I, I don't know if the staffing person's going to take thirty days, sixty days, whatever, and in the meantime. Website's still sitting there. Not changing. Right. And so, and so I'm, you know, it's kind of like David, like saying, okay, I'll be the FOIA coordinator, you know, to try to. Pull that off right now, and I'm. I've been saying, I will do whatever I can for the website to pull that off. And then I think if we can have those two issues addressed. Short term, it at least allows us the time to get the other information, to get everybody here together. To have a productive conversation so that we can move forward with some plan.
Um. I didn't truly originally set up website. I'd have complete access for everybody.
And even, like I said, even if I have access, then I need. A manual or something so that I can figure out. How to fix things. Okay, so I need to talk to Ed again.
We already did it before. We talked about that at one of the meetings. Well, I think that was. Came about. Because.
Letting me, which I don't have even for that, but letting me. And I mean. Getting things fixed. It's not going to be perfect, but at least. I didn't, I didn't see it on the agenda. I didn't see. That on the agenda. Yeah, I, I was taking it, yeah, that I could see. Well, I. Well, I think one thing we need to do is schedule a meeting where everybody's here. I mean. And has a couple hours at least, but. I want to understand. What? I want to understand what the job description of that person would be. And what the number of hours. That would be. And, and how. Job description usually doesn't talk about number of hours. I mean, it might say full timer, part-time position. But I'd want to know that, and then I'd want to understand with that job description. What does that fix, improve, whatever words you want? With what's happening right now? Make sense? That's just for me. I mean, I, people may have. Other ways of dealing it, but I, it's hard for me to react to. Yeah, that's a great idea. No, it's not a great idea when I don't have enough information.
Somebody needs to fix them, maybe that. There are no one act month towns with meetings. Minutes on the website for March on you, which was the budget, you approved the budget. That meeting. About the budget is. I, I don't want to wait till that person. Yes, there is. There are people had been rebelled before that. We had access when we were definitely, we have only two people with access. It makes the president correct what is wrong and what is missing out. And things along and. I said, go, I said. I would like to endorse. But it's simply not web access. I would like to have Mandy, that web. Is that right? And I am really frustrated. That. That Bradford keeps talking about the. I want it to be better, and I want the years to last here, and I really hope things are being replaced with.
That seems like work here. Here hasn't been done. We want to do something.
So get C. Maybe what was that?
The minutes for.
Oh, that's the township meeting. No March twentieth, twenty. Oh, that's the township meeting. No March twentieth, twenty, twenty-four, which pleasure was. No September. No agenda. For September. Three. No February. Or January of twenty-four from that amount. No more review. Minutes for twenty twenty-four. The on that planning commission, there are two thousand of May minutes, one says. There are two thousand of the April. Neither one says grab and I'm sorry, I don't mean to. But this is really, really.
You want me? You bought it? That's the hell out of me. He isn't gonna get it done. I don't know how to do it.
That's all I'm saying. And the supervisor and the. Can't come to a work session. But you. It's. Yeah, all I. Wow, because I've been saying this for a year. My thing. And I would like the timeline.
Well, I'm trying. When you hit a timeline. On the nail of the wall. I'm. She's gotta be rehired. And you want all this coming? For actions.
On timeline for sure.
Didn't I tell you that? Have a meeting tomorrow. Timeline.
These two people.
Well, all I'm saying is, I don't know. I mean, I'm not going to say that. No, all I'm saying is I'm not going to say how people are gonna vote, because I don't know how people are gonna vote. That's all I'm saying.
What I want. Not to know, but I would like for it to be trial. With a short term. For the.
That's what that is.
Man. Soon these.
Let's go back to that.
We have.
I said, I said, we're gonna bring this up for the board tomorrow. The discussion. You want? Let her do that? Or not?
All right, but once you decide. Must decide that. And open. I've been having a good tree this whole time. For elections, she's. That that's why she doesn't have access.
And when she. Her decide. Let her decide.
So who's gonna be the access person? A point or a life? What is exactly?
So here's. Okay, here's what I'm hearing. And I'm trying to speak for both of you. Okay, and I'm not saying I'm hearing you correctly, but I think. Communication's not working right now, so. I think what I'm hearing is because of the discussion we're having right now. Tomorrow, with it being on the agenda, the FOIA coordinator slash website access person. A report is basically all we're gonna be able to give, correct? And it's, you know, gonna say, hey, you know, we met, it's difficult. To have the discussion without all people present. We need that to happen. We also need, or what came out of that meeting is wanting. A job description, scope, all of that kind of stuff. And then the other thing that came out of that meeting is. That I volunteered. Again, to. Be the access person. But I need access. And the ability to be trained. And that's what I understand is coming out of this right now, and we need to schedule another meeting. But um, so it would be put to the board. To. Approve. Me having and and here's where I think it is different. For me to be able to have general access, not just for the planning commission. Um, and then. Assuming it's approved, assuming I get the access as soon as possible, Libby, I mean, to give you a timeframe, I'd start looking at the website, draining myself. The next night, I mean. I mean, does that kind of address what you're asking, though? I mean, I didn't put words in anybody's mouth, did I?
Web access. What we're doing about this for your. Your support staff. Isn't it leaving? I think we gave us this the whole thing because. We talked about during planning commission and then I said, let's do. I once somebody said that we're putting too many people with access. At that one meeting that we had. So that that might be where confusion comes. I think in the minutes I gave you me.
I will look at the minutes because I I remember it being more for planning commission. I think. What the discussion turned into. And I. My memory is that Ed commented on it, as did I. That the concern would be if we let Parks Commission deal with parks, if we let. Somebody from Planning Commission deal, somebody from zoning, you know. If we had like ten people having access dealing with their thing. That that without some type of oversight would be, to me, would be a mess. That was my comment, that it would look, our our website wouldn't look like it belonged to the same family. I think those were the exact words I said.
You didn't.
Well, and I think there's people that, I mean. You still have clerk in different positions and have to have access, but I think what we were talking about is. If we have every single committee dealing with their own area. Then there's no level, there's no person who's responsible for like meeting postings. Or minute postings, and that was the concern. That I was having when I was. When we were having the discussion about, oh, let's just let have everybody on committees have access and it's like. Yeah, I mean, you gotta have somebody who's saying where the buck stops, I guess is what I'm saying, and so. If if a meeting's not posted. Correct. That that's all I was trying to say when we were talking about too much access.
But the what?
I mean, I think people's input and whatever they'd like. You know, maybe to have poster or whatever, but I but I think the core stuff. Minutes, um, meetings. You know. Events happening related to the township, you know, all that kind of stuff. Archived. Yeah, I mean. Well, I don't know if it's still on, but I know it was fairly recently, but still have, we're accepting clerk applications. Yeah, that that's. A maintenance, a maintenance person janitor. I agree. So I'd take the job. And I'm cheap. I'm cheap.
It's hard to record how your day is spent. About how many times done on my case? I'd not sit. Public member, resident vote. No member. I would love to suggest that saying, because I totally agree, you both need help. But it's not. And I'm involved because I'm in here and I see how much work you do. It's much easier for me to go out. For these lines. And this is why. Seventy-five percent of the time I'm like. Would you? Or whatever. Manny, I know you're in here, but I have no idea. Well, yeah. What I see. I am pretty. Involved in literally probably agreeing about. Who knows what is going on? I I did not realize. How much more extra time. I didn't know Bob was because he's been here all the time. I need to. To help. Well, because. For so. On the power. For this war. Would encourage you to. The number of. There's no. And if you try that, you will get. You will have your. Position discretion. And how many hours that position can be.
Well, and your comments are in line with what I said, because I'd like to understand what. Where time's being spent.
Yeah. Right.
Well, I I think if you, I think if you focus on it for. And I mean, we're not talking about doing it for a year or anything, but I what I did, because I did it once for myself. Personally. Because. And I and I was in a upper level management position, but I was still trying to understand where is my time going? Um, and I had staff do it. Just had a sheet and, you know, I mean, sure, sometimes you're on phone and then you're doing an email and whatever, but. There are other times where you are doing payroll. Okay, well, payroll was four hours. Yeah. Four hours on payroll. Um. And then I think you can kind of quantify. How much time you spent with emails. I mean. I would know if I answered ten emails in a day or if I answered a hundred emails, you know, so. I don't think we're trying to say, okay, at nine oh one to nine. Oh, two. No, I'm not going that far, but. But it's gotta be fairly concise.
And the more work doesn't bother me, that we're doing doesn't bother me. I can do anything to help out here. It's just to make it efficiently when you know. One person or two people are doing it. Hey, this is a lot of work. I can do it all, however, is it really efficient? Right. Saying this is the world you do and you're not gonna like. But it will be the first time. I start writing. All the work you do. Because that is going to leave us with holes.
You're right.
No, and honestly, Libby, I mean, that was, that's why. But we're talking about everything. I mean, we really are in. Because. We do.
Our taking out of the loop, which is open by being there today. It's fast. And we really. Can't stop. And nobody. And nobody has. All the. The same. Honestly, as a member of the public. I don't want this county to collapse. Because. There is no plan. In freedom. So I really like the very same crew because I think there isn't any maintenance person to me.
That was part of our discussion about the staffing too.
No, you don't believe that. That I believe. I don't believe.
I don't.
I think, I think you're kind of a person, valuable person. And that's what this is all about.
All I'm saying, don't. You want to do. About some things that is bad. But so I am done.
Anyway, we have.
Can you come up with some sort of, well, we'll try. Habit, stay. Team, that's what I was thinking. Um, and then maybe a job description, throw it out there. Or session. You know, most tend and.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, I don't want to throw something else over a job description or hours, but maybe that's what we can. Session is kind of. Work on. That we're all.
I think if we had a draft job description. The. Information that we're talking about with how time is being spent. Um. You know, Bob, the things that you're doing, because I I mean, again, I know today we're focusing on. Website FOIA and administrative, but. Again, I think we gotta look at the whole big picture. Because and and I remember, because we were bringing in the things you do, because one time when we were talking about it at a meeting. I think it was Ed who brought up like a maintenance thing and then you were bringing up whatever. And I'm like, those are two different skill sets. They're not gonna be the same person, you know, or if the ads are gonna be, they're not gonna be the same person. Pardon me? I understand that. I understand that, but he was talking about taking. Just talking about doing some of the stuff that he does.
Wasn't it yourself with us? I guess I'm just confused on. Because of it. The ones he did with. His own arrangement, that's what the parks and records.
Well, I thought he was doing a lot of stuff around here and all of that also. No, that's what I'm saying. Okay, so, yeah, so. But but. But again, I think we need to talk about that. Absolutely.
I see you bringing in. Yeah. The one day when you didn't bring a minute, I could bring a minute.
Well, the good thing about.